All right, once we get the high sign, everybody.
I wish that for you.
All right, and we have it. All right. So good evening, welcome to the Thursday, May 26, 2022 Xenia City Council meeting. And at this time, we will have an invocation led by Senior Pastor Todd Martin from Liberty Worship Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our Mayor Sarah Mays. If you could all please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we just come to you in the mighty name of Jesus. And we've all been humbled this week. And we just pray for Texas. We pray, Lord, that you would touch these families and just minister to them. Wrap your arms of compassion and love around them. Lord, I thank you for this council. I thank you, Lord, for this city. And I pray that you will give us grace and mercy and unity tonight as we do our best to glorify you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Pastor Martin. Thank you very much. Mays, at this time, I'll call the meeting into order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Our Councilman Dean? Mayor Mays?
Here.
Attorney Smith?
Here. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. This is from the May 12, 2022 regular meeting. At this time, I'll introduce a motion to accept the minutes.
Senator.
Led by Councilwoman Dean. And I'll ask for a second, please. A second. Seconded by the Vice President. Any additions, corrections, or notations for the minutes on hand? If not, we'll go into a roll call to accept the minutes, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Attorney Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. We have no special presentations scheduled for tonight's meeting. Next on the agenda is opportunity for audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting where anyone in the audience is welcome to come to the podium. Give us your name, address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Brian Ryan. I live at 214 Edison Boulevard. My property is connected to the cities where the high school used to sit. And when I say it's connected, it is connected. As in, I drive on their property every day. So I'm here about the selling of that building. I've lived next to two directors, Senior Citizen Center, for 20 years. It's been great. In this easement, they set their picnic table up in my backyard, and I take care of half of the parking lot. From the drain to my house, I take care of. The actual width of the easement, even though my driveway's 10, it's 15 foot. The cove cut to get into my driveway is 15 foot because there was a pole in the alley at the end of my driveway. I've got to know Josh and Tammy and Asher as neighbors. I would like to have them as neighbors. It would be a good fit. It would be just like living next to the Senior Citizen Center, you know? I know this isn't possible, but I don't want to live next to a Dollar General. That's just an exaggeration, okay? As you know, we've had COVID for the last two and a half years. My dad didn't make it, okay? I know that he's been trying to get this up and running for three years during two and a half years of COVID. I call those gap years. I say he's due two gap years because it's been impossible. My best friend in North Carolina's family's mentally ill, and it's been impossible. They don't even give him boosters because Harvard said they can't, you know? I'm not representing my neighborhood, but I'm reporting back to my neighborhood. My neighborhood is Church Street to the park, to the fieldhouse, and I have one dear neighbor that has us all connected. And many of you know who she is. If I hand her a petition, it's signed today. Because we know when everybody's birthdays are, and when everybody dies, and when everybody retires. And then we know a story about that person. You know, we're connected through this person. I'm not saying I'm representing the neighborhood, but I'm reporting back. I think we know that the problem is that the building can't be leased for Joshua to make this thing work. Somehow, we have to get the building in his name. I don't need to explain the YMCA to you. I don't need to explain the library. This is on the same level. And a lot of you know about the building. It's in as much disrepair as those other two buildings. It's got seven furnaces. Every roof penetration leaks because they should be on a flat rubber roof. There was a reason those two people wanted a new building, the Y, you know, and the Senior Citizen Center. The Y's utilities went down. You know, all those huge high roofs, their utilities went down. I think that you kind of know what I'm about and what I stand for. I'd like to get Josh up here because I've been told he's never dressed the entire city council. If that's all right.
Well, sir, you're at four minutes.
Okay, I just.
So if you want to wrap it up?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, Josh is welcome to come up and address council tonight and audience comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time?
Just to clarify, there's another spot on the agenda. I think I could have better, so we'll just wait.
I didn't hear that.
He's going to wait till the bottom here.
You'll come and speak.
Oh, very good. No community feedback on the sale of a property?
All right, very good. All right. So right now, we're still at audience comments. One last call, if anyone cared to come to the podium. Yeah. So Josh, there is no public hearing actually scheduled for tonight?
Okay.
For that purpose.
For that purpose.
For that purpose. So if you would like to come to the podium?
I just figured there would be some public feedback on deciding to sell the city property. But maybe that's in the next round, or maybe it's not necessary. So I'm Josh Sernetic. I've been the tenant of 130 East Church Street. Went through an extensive process with city, city staff, and city business owners prior to COVID to get approval to do a business development center at 130 East Church Street in partnership with Central State. Through COVID and changes at Central State, that plan eventually kind of fell apart. I don't need to take up much of your time because you all have had executive session, private meetings, things like that. I just think I would like to publicly share my concern for the way things were handled. One, I came to the city to present a possible project to fix what didn't work. It would provide, it would require the sale of the building. And yes, like many properties in the city of Xenia, because of the amount, I'd take $1, $2.9 million to rehab the property. I did ask for it at $1, like many properties, or a low cost like many places have. But on the other side of that, I had a later meeting where there was discussion about what the purchase price would be, what it would be in the lease, which I believe the city is trying to strong-arm our organization out of because if you read the lease, we have not violated it. And on legal counsel, they said I could fight it if I wanted. I do not want to have that relationship with the city. I do not, from the beginning of this project, this has been to help improve the city of Xenia. The project that was proposed allowed 35 full-time employment jobs in that building. There'd be almost $2.5 million of taxable income for the city of Xenia. Even if you just continued the lease, which I'm really not quite sure how that all went down in executive session and all that, or if it was voted on, it's an existing lease. Even if you just continue the lease, two years from now, that building would have more value than it has right now. When I met with your president and vice president to share the project with them again, even though after the first meeting with the assistant city manager, I was told the next time I would have the opportunity to present to the entire property committee, and that never happened, several of which didn't return phone calls or emails. We had the conversation about, yes, it can continue even as a lease. I have already invested almost $20,000 on the property. I'm prepared to invest another $40,000 right now and have secured anchor tenants for the facility. And from the beginning of the lease, it was known and approved that that property would be sublet to business owners and for business development in the city of Xenia. I know many of you that are hearing and making decisions on this were not on the council when it was originally decided. So the long and short of it is, I am very disappointed that we cannot move forward with a project that would benefit the city of Xenia. I'm also disappointed that I did not have an opportunity to present to the whole property committee and/or the council to have a fair. When you hear things through the multiple people sitting on the telephone, and there may be points and facts missed. So while I am willing to step away from the lease, maintain a reasonable relationship with the city, you guys are also voting on the sale of a property that I received no notification, official letter of notification from city staff or the law director saying my lease is being vacated. So my question would be, is will that happen shortly? Or are you going to vote on selling a property that's still legally under contract with the tenant tonight? So that's just the decision you guys have to make. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time? All right, thank you. We'll move on to old business. All right, our first item under old business, ordinance 2022-13. This is a public hearing. This is amending Chapter 260 of personnel and Chapter 274 of the Civil Service Commission, repealing Section 230.03 of the Xenia City Code. This is introduced by the mayor at our last regular meeting.
Thank you, sir. Are there two move for passage?
Thank you, move for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any comments or questions regarding this? All right, at this time, I will open up the public hearing for this matter only and ask if anyone would care to come to the podium and speak in favor of amending chapters 260 and 274. All right, if anyone would care to come to the podium and speak against amending chapters 260 and 274. All right. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing on that ordinance and invite my colleagues for any comments. And now ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Attorney Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing. This is ordinance 2022-14. This is amending Chapter 444 and repealing Chapter 446 of the City of Xenia traffic code. This is introduced by Councilman Scrivens at our last regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for adoption.
Thank you, move for passage by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor, thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask for anyone that would care to come forward and speak in favor of amending Chapter 444 and repealing 446 to come to the podium. If anyone would care to come to the podium and speak against amending or repealing. I see no one coming forward. At this time, I will close the public hearing and invite any of my colleagues that have any questions or comments, concerns. And seeing none, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Attorney Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing. This is ordinance 2022-15. This is to determine and proceed with improvement of city street and public ways by the lighting thereof of Street Lighting District Number One, known as Sterling Green Crossing subdivision for years 2023 through 2027. This was introduced by Councilman Dean at our last meeting. In his absence, I will so introduce and ask for a second.
A second?
Seconded by the Vice President. At this time, I'll open the floor for the public hearing and ask if anyone would care to come to the podium and speak in favor of this ordinance. If anyone would care to come to the podium and speak against this ordinance. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for any comments or questions by the colleagues. Seeing?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just to let the viewers know that this particular piece of legislation, for each owner of a lot in Sterling Green, they'll be assessed $31.14. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's the annual assessment, correct?
My annual fee.
Not a monthly, okay. All right. So with no other comments, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Attorney Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing. This is ordinance 2022-16. This is determining to proceed with the improvements of city street and public ways by the lighting thereof within Street Lighting District Number Two. This is the Greenway subdivision, Section 2, for years 2023 through 2027. This was introduced by Vice President Herschel at our last regular meeting.
Move for approval?
Thank you, move for passage by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branum. At this time, I will invite anyone who would care to come to the podium as we open up the public hearing on this ordinance only and give us your name, address for the record. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone that would like to speak against this ordinance? It's a little different than what we've done before. So this is kind of a new way of doing a meeting. So if it's a little rough at first, I apologize. All right. At this time, we have no comments. So I will close the public hearing, invite any comments from our colleagues, council members?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you again. Just for the viewers to note that those lot owners in this particular section of Greenway subdivision, your annual fee for this is $250.74. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. All right, with no other comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Attorney Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Our next item is new business. We're moving on to ordinance 2022-17 titled Emergency. This is amending ordinance 2022-12 to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia for fiscal year ending in December 31 of 2022 and declaring an emergency to do so. At this time, I will turn the floor over to our finance director.
Thank you, Council President. We are requesting additional appropriations this evening for four different purposes. The first is that we were fortunate enough to be issued or awarded some grant dollars through the Oha Public Works Grants Commission. And so we're asking that those dollars be appropriated in the correct purposes. The grant amount is $221,993, and there's a $77,997 match for that grant. We're also asking that appropriations be made for an additional loan or an increase in the loan to Mr. Timothy Suntag. This is in relation to the Lit Brothers Building and the Hope Six Grant that was awarded to help facilitate housing in the upper floors of that building. Staff has had several conversations and dialogue concerning what it would take to get this project completed. And it looks like an additional loan in the amount of $84,800 would help the property owner to get the project across the finish line. So we're recommending that dollars be set aside for that purpose. And I believe there's amended agenda item. Better get into some more detail on that later this evening. We're also requesting that $50,000 be appropriated for security enhancements at Lexington Park. This is primarily for a perimeter fence to be erected to prevent motorized vehicles from traversing that property. And I think for the most part, council aware of some of the activity there and why that's being recommended here this evening. And then finally, we're requesting $10,000 be set aside for surveying repairs and the listing of the property at 130 East Church Street. There's some work that needs to be done to make sure that those parcels are divided properly and some work to be done in order to prepare that property for sale. So we're requesting that this evening as well.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Mr. Duke at this time?
Yeah, Mr. President. I was not present on council when the original, when the shoe and leather project was initiated. So could you just, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to talk to you about this ahead of time. But what are the terms of the loan as we make this?
Yeah, so I believe that what's being proposed here is that a mortgage would be placed on this loan, which would obviously be on that property. The prior loan, I think, is a similar arrangement. There were grant dollars, about half a million dollars, that were set aside for this project. There've been other resources brought to bear as well. But the, I guess, if you could give me, if there's something specific you have a question about, I mean, there's about a half a million dollars in grant money. And then there's a loan that's already been approved of $115,200. We're asking for another $84,800.
If I may, sir.
Sure.
In the agenda item we have later in the evening, and this is a little wonky because of the timing of these things, the, I think the terms for this additional loan are 12 years, 2%.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, and again, as Ryan indicated, it's attached to the property. And I'm getting ahead of myself, but just to give context, when this process started, before we got it through an extensive code review process, looking at Chapter 34 for historic preservation, things like that, that's why it's taken so long.
Right.
So from the point that estimates were first produced for this to now, the cost of this conversion is significantly higher. So there's just a little bit of gap between the grant, some traditional financing, what the city had already provided, and then this additional funding would, or would help to fill that gap. Have they provided an estimate that if we approve these funds about what the timeframe for completion of the project is? I'm not sure I can answer that, Ryan. Do you have any estimate?
Will the majority of the funds have to be spent by September 30 of this year? The project doesn't have to be financed.
I think the intent is that they would engage services immediately. And I believe that they finally have gotten through that code review process, working with building inspection, and have a plan of action in place for how they'll proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. I see the total request is about $1.3 million. Is that about correct?
For their project? Are you asking about that project?
No, no, total. Total asked for the.
For this ordinance?
Yeah.
No, it's less than that. It's approximately $500.
How much?
$440.
Can we discuss specific projects at this point?
On this?
Yeah.
You have a care with that?
Yeah, I got a purged.
All right, yes.
Could you discuss the Lexington Park enhancements, please?
Yeah, so as I had informed council via email, I think that was last week, two weeks ago, I put together a task force within our administrative folks, as well as public safety, public service, looking at some of the core security concerns at Lexington Park. And this is really based on discussion with council. I recognize some deep concerns that you have about the current utilization or frankly, abuse at the park. And we have separately conversations ongoing with folks from the community to try to look at how we really bring revitalization to that park and that neighborhood. Based on recommendations from our public safety, our law enforcement folks, as well as our public service folks, staff feels very, very strongly that there are certain security enhancements that need to be undertaken at the park, such that we can then offer some assurance that any additional investments in the way of amenities at the park can be properly protected. Among the key concerns at the park are the types of activities, illicit, illegal activities, a lot of vehicles that drive in and through the park, whether they be all-terrain vehicles, motorcycles, cars. You've seen some of the video footage of cars on the basketball court doing donuts and just really dangerous and illegal activities. All of those things to say that, as I suggested, there are security enhancements, among which would include some type of perimeter fence that would create a physical separation from any areas that cars would have access to from the areas that are specifically allocated for pedestrian use. So we're looking at a fence, not a hardened fence that would be somewhat aesthetic, but still provide a physical barrier. We would look at security surveillance cameras to be able to hopefully intercede when we see things getting out of control, hopefully deter some of that activity, or if it occurs, have the ability to hold people accountable by helping to identify them. We would look at what I would call rolling gates. So these would be hard-mounted gates on a wheel at both the entrance way off of Lexington as well as the exit off of, is that Clark? It's Clark Street. The intent here is that in the evenings, when the park is closed, all of our parks closed by ordinance at dusk, at the soonest available time after proper hours, our sergeant on duty would go out, close those gates. In the morning, our public service staff would come out and open the gates. So we're not restricting the hours of the park. We're just limiting vehicular access after hours when the park is supposed to be closed anyway. So that would be gates. This would also include erection of our communities, our park signage, the formal signage that we have at other parks that we don't, have currently installed at this park. There are some other enhancements that we've talked about. In terms of parking access, we would eliminate part of, a large part of the existing parking lot and do some preliminary repair work, restriping of some parking adjacent to the current restroom building. So some other enhancements like that. But primarily, most of those costs are rolled into the fencing, the gates, the security camera intended to improve the types of behavior and activity at the park. I think that probably covers the key elements to that.
All right, any other questions?
Well, one of the line items that I'd be opposed to in this particular project would be the establishment of gates. I think to fence people off is one thing, but to gate them off is another. There's no other gates in any park in Xenia, and I'm not for the establishment of gates at Lexington Park. So.
What about the, there's a chain though at Shawnee Park.
Yeah, but that's going to the.
That keeps people from driving up there.
That's just a, and it would only be closed when it's, the park is closed.
So there's chains on both sides of the Shawnee.
Mm-hmm.
People can't drive through where the kids are.
I'd say we'd take a more in-depth look at the need for a gate at Lexington Park. Other than that, I didn't hear anything about bathroom improvements. I heard bathroom, but no improvements. So if we're going to allocate money, that's first on the list. Other than that, I can't support it, Mr. President.
I think that this is a priority thing of making sure that the park is going to be not vandalized before we dump a bunch of money into this project. You know, if we go and we put $150,000, $200,000 into a playground, into a new basketball court, and then come next weekend, somebody comes out there and takes their car down there and they do donuts on the basketball court and tore it all, tear it all up, then we just threw away, you know, $150,000, $200,000, whatever the amount is, out the window.
Well, I can understand the fence. I mean, that's perfectly within the purview, just like we spent $12,000 to put the fence there in Shawnee Park. You were probably still in diapers then, but I just, I would not support a gate at Lexington Park under this particular concept. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I understand. But I also feel a need that we have to protect our city asset there at the park. And I think it would actually enhance security via having an officer at night locking the park, the gate. park, the gate, when it's closed at dusk, and then reopen in the morning when it's available. I don't think we're keeping the park from anyone. I think we're controlling our asset and preventing ability for cars to go into the park and do damage. So I understand the rationale for gates. I don't see it being a problem. It's our city property we're protecting. That's my opinion on that.
In that case, sir, then I would advocate strongly that we protect all of our city parks the same way. And do that simultaneously.
I wish we could.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Sure. I don't know where to go from here. Any other comments on this?
Well, I'll just say that the total for the ordinance is 444,790 dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I was just going to note that I have recused myself from all discussion regarding 130 East Church Street, just due to my involvement on a board with Mr. Sernetic and being a possible tenant, so I will need to abstain from that vote.
Can we vote on, Mr. President? Can we vote on each one separately, or is it a package?
So that would be a question for the law director.
If one ordinance, you're voting on the appropriation as a whole, now is it going to be a motion made to amend, to add or remove anything? But the ordinance is presented as amendment to the appropriation.
Okay, so we have an ordinance presented as is, how we can make amendments to that is what I understand.
You can make an amendment to the appropriation. I don't know that there could be amendment not to do the security enhancements, that's simply what the money's for. There can be an amendment to cut that out of the ordinance, but that, that would be the only amendment. You can't amend this ordinance as to what the money's going to be spent on, you can amend it as to we want to add more or take that amount out.
Sorry, Mr. President, I can make a comment. So it's time, we've put a lot of time, it was last year, with a lot of folks trying to move forward on Lexington. And I think you know that sympathies are to make that a highlight of the community, a place where families are going to feel safe to have their kids and their teens and their families to go and enjoy that and to help, they're just part of revitalization, of a component of our city. For better or worse, there's bad behavior, and not even necessarily from folks from Xenia, that's been occurring on a fairly regular basis this spring, that's gotten completely out of hand in that park. And we might be talking about doing the same kind of security enhancements if it was on West Side Park, or if it was at, you know, Spring Hill Park, or those kind of things, right? But it just happens to be Lexington. I know this is, this is a relief on top of our discussions about the improvements, right? But we have to stop that bad behavior. And, you know, we had, we had a couple of sessions with the staff and we challenged them to say, right, we're going to stop talking about bad behavior, and we're going to talk about what do we need to do to curtail that. And for better or worse, a good part of that bad behavior was a lot of folks showing up with vehicles at the park, not only during park hours, but after hours, right? And staying for as long as they wanted to and doing whatever they wanted to do with their vehicles after hours. And that behavior's got to stop, right? And so I just think that we don't, you know, part of our expectations for our community parks is that we don't have lighting available for them, we don't have a lot of the safety features for them. So one of the reasons we have a park rule is that we close at dusk, right? Because we've told the community, this isn't, this is Lexington, this is West Side, this is, you know.
They all close at dusk.
They all close at dusk, right? It just happens that at this one particular park, we've got a lot of behavior going on past dusk, right? And I, you know, it's going to take some work to get folks to relearn behavior there. And once again, 9% of the folks that are doing this may not have anything to do with Xenia, right? And I'm not going to say where they're coming from, but they're not coming from Xenia, right? But we just don't have that quantity of people even to be able to do that, right? About what's been occurring there. So part of that is to also start training people that, hey, I don't know what's going on in your community, where you're coming from, right? Maybe in your community, you go do whatever you want to do at your parks at whatever time you want to do, right? But in our community, our parks close at dusk, right? And so we're going to, we're going to enforce this, and I think having some of the sergeant and police staff go out there and that makes a statement, right? We shut that down. But the other thing too is to say, hey, in the morning, it's open, and it's open for everybody. We're not trying to put any kind of barrier there. Now, a year downstream, that behavior may be gone, and maybe time for us to get rid of that, right? And same kind of thing, there's been times, and I've lived in Xenia since '84, right? A lot of you have been along here longer than me, there's been times when we didn't need to have the chains on Shawnee Park, because people had common sense enough not to go driving their cars around down in there. But then there's been times when people, for whatever reason, have decided I can just be foolish, and we had to put the chains up to keep the people, vehicles off of Shawnee Park, right? And part of my hope would be that as people, you know, the community's able to learn things, I don't like having those chains there, right? I don't know, if it gets to the point where Sterling Green Park with its, you know, eight parking spaces, people are pulling up there and being stupid at night, we may have to do the same thing there, but they're not doing that there now. But it doesn't mean that six months from now, they may not, right? But if it does, let's address it. I think, and Tony, I'm with you, we have got to address the bad behavior thing so we're going to feel comfortable, not only about city investment, we got, there are a lot of citizens that are ready to put their dollars in there, right? But they're also trusting us. The citizens have no way of enforcing, you know, the termination of the bad behavior, other than, you know, some community pressure. But we got hundreds of people coming from outside the city to be fools, right? That's depressing on the community. It's depressing on the folks in that part of the neighborhood, it's depressing on all the rest of us. So I agree, I don't want to see barriers up like that, but we got to put an end to this.
If the gentleman of you, I'd be amenable to a chain, but a gate, I'm not. So just that's something. We're not going to have a gated community at the dead end of my street that my family's been living on for 99 years. It's just not going to happen. So, thank you, Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for you.
So.
And also, Mr. President, if I could, to speak to the vandalism aspect, there's never been a major vandalism at Lexington Park, to my knowledge. And like I said, my family's been living on the street for 99 years. So the building is there now, it's not been vandalized, it's just been deferred maintenance.
Thanks. All right, thank you.
Let me bring this question.
All right, so at this point, we have an ordinance before us. My question to the law director is that this would fail. This needs a super majority, is that correct?
Four.
Or four?
Yes, this takes four.
It takes four?
I thought four.
Okay.
To pass.
All right, so.
I would point out, Mr. City Manager, you mentioned this earlier, we have been enforcing in the other parks as well, trespassing at night, correct?
Yeah, well, I'd make two points on that. One, yes. My directive to our police division is that we are, the rules are the rules, they're there for a reason. We've had a lot of issues at Shawnee Park. We regularly have guests lingering in the park, two, three in the morning. And so I can, I mean, as recently as this week, we have trespass folks from the park after hours. Yeah, from Shawnee. Now, conversely, you know, we do have a problem in Sterling Green Park. If you're familiar with the park, it's sprawled out, and we have one area that's largely underutilized portion of that park where we've got a couple of kids riding dirt bikes regularly. It's not just that it's not allowed, it's destroying the property there. So we're actively engaged in a conversation with the police division about how we hold those individuals accountable. So these are factors that affect, you know, some of our other, our other parks as well, but there's been a concentration and intensity of issues at Lexington Park. And I know it's the will of this council, at least to the conversationally, as you have suggested at this point, that you want to make an investment there, and you're trying to change the dynamic. And the staff feels pretty strongly that these measures are necessary to institute some order and begin some of the culture change that needs to occur so that, as one of you suggested, you know, you can send your kids down there and make them feel safe. But again, we close off all the parks after dark, that's been a longstanding policy of council, because we just can't enforce the activities that, you know, that should, you know, not be occurring otherwise.
One more point, and I respect and hear your decision. When it comes to gating things off, I would point out that this is something that would only be during the closed hours. At Shawnee Park, that chain stays at all hours. And so it is actually not even as limiting as our main park. It's more open, and it would not have the same limitations that our premier park has.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, this is time to call for the question and ask if anyone would care to make a motion as an emergency for ordinance 2022-17. So moved by Councilman Branham. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Could I ask for a roll call, please?
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
No.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Stand.
Lieutenant Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is ordinance 2022-18. This is titled An Introduction. This is vacating the alley between part of Lot 165, Parcel 1, and part of Lot 172, Parcel 2 of the original plat of the city of Xenia, known as the Ward's Lewis Survey number 2243 in the Virginia Military District. Mr. Mayor, would you care to explain that?
Yes, sir, thank you. The owner of a single-family home at 191 East Second Street, as well as an adjacent vacant lot on South Collier Street, has initiated a petition requesting the city vacate an unused and frankly impractical alleyway currently owned by the city, which separates the petitioner's aforementioned properties. These two lots are separated by a seven and a half foot wide public alley. The petitioner wishes to utilize a portion of the land in the alley for fencing and other improvements. The alley also abuts 183 East Second Street. The owner of that property has indicated their approval of the alley vacation by signing the petition in a consent waiver of notice form. Upon vacation, half of the alley's width would be deeded to each of the abutting property owners. The right of way in question does not contain any public improvements and frankly lacks sufficient width for vehicular travel. Staff sees no public need for the alley. As such, and based on these factors, we anticipate that there would be no adverse actions caused by this vacation, and staff has no objections to it. We are recommending introduction of the ordinance this evening so that the issue of this vacation of the alley might be considered.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the City Manager on this? All right. And who would care to introduce, please? Introduced by Councilwoman Dean. Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022, Letter CC. This is authorizing additional loan of $84,000 and eight, I'm sorry, $84,800 to Timothy and Lynn Sontag to provide additional gap funding for the HOPE 6 Xenia Shoe and Leather Project at 21 East Main Street in Xenia, Ohio. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so we've discussed a little bit, we'll only kind of give an introduction as well, a little more detail. So the city was previously awarded, applied for and awarded this federal under the Housing Urban Development Department grant, which is titled the HOPE 6 Program. It's a Main Street grant program, and the amount of that grant was $500,000. The purpose was to renovate the top two floors of what we know as the Litt Brothers Building, also known as Xenia Shoe and Leather, again located at 21 East Main Street. Now, the project entails the construction of four walk-up residential units that would be made available initially to low to moderate income families for the first leasing cycle, and then will revert to market rate thereafter. The grant was awarded to the city, but the grant program stipulates that the funds are passed on to the property owners via a forgivable loan. The city is required to distribute the HOPE 6 grant funds to the property owners on a reimbursement basis per cost that they would incur in completing the project. In 2018, as plans progressed and other funding sources were secured, there remained an initial financing gap for the project of $115,200. Owners of the property received approval for the business loan for the project through the city based on recommendation from our loan trust committee. On April 12, 2018, council authorized funds for the business loan to facilitate that project. That loan term was 10 years at 2% interest, again secured by a promissory note and recorded on the mortgage for that property. Since 2008, however, we've experienced a lot of delay in the design work, largely because it's a historic building and the change of use. So when you're changing the use, particularly in these upper floors, going from a more commercial specifically to a residential, there's a much higher safety requirement that's necessary. So we spent a lot of time talking about fire separation and safety and sprinkling and, you know, what's the proper methodology to meet code requirements that would still be affordable and practical, given the limited resources for the project. Those delays were compounded by COVID-19. As we've heard in other contexts tonight, that has slowed a lot of things down. So as a result, there is this additional gap that has emerged of about $84,800. Mrs. Sontag, the owners of the building has indicated and have approached the city about this supplemental loan, which would have a 12-year term at 2%. It's believed that that combined with some PACE financing, if you're familiar with the PACE program, that that would fill the overall gap with some traditional lending products as well as the grant. And that, they believe, would be sufficient to allow the project to move forward. As was mentioned previously, there is a pretty urgent timeline for these dollars to be expended the owners, and we believe that that is doable, but we're bringing this back to council for consideration right now, in the hopes that we can get this approved and get the construction process started. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions, but staff is recommending and endorsing this subsequent additional loan to cover that gap.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the President? I mean, for City Manager, not for me. All right. Seen on, who would care to make a motion to authorize this loan? Okay, motion by the mayor. Do we have a second? I'll second. And if there's no other comments, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
Lieutenant Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022, Letter DD. This is authorizing myself as council president to execute a contract on behalf of Xenia City Council with Michelle Johnson for services as our city clerk. And May of 12, I'm sorry, May 12 of 2022, council approved by a procedural motion the reappointment of Michelle Johnson as our city clerk effective on June 1st, following her retirement from the Ohio Public Employment Retirement System. Ms. Johnson has requested an employment contract to outline the terms of her reemployment. As an appointed official with an employment contract, the terms of the city's retire and rehire policy would not apply. At this time, I will make a motion to execute the contract with Ms. Johnson on behalf of the city council and to take into consideration her years of exceptional service with the city, and I would ask for a motion, a second to my motion. Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Any discussion or comments, questions regarding her contract? All right. Can I just make one?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to commend Michelle's service to us, and she's responsive immediately to any request any of us have. And a lot of times, especially on research items, you know, we can pretty much ask her any question about the context of our ordinances, resolutions, and go back pretty far. And if she doesn't know it offhand, she will dog it down and do the research. And, you know, once again, she really believes that her job is to help us be successful in serving the community. And so I just think it's a great thing that Michelle wants to stay on and work with us.
All right, thank you very much. I did all of that. Any other comments? All right, this time I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor May? Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome back. All right, our next item is Resolution 2022-E. This is authorizing the sale listing of a portion of city-owned property located at 130 East Church Street. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council, for many years, leased the building located at 131 East Church Street to the Xenia Adult Recreation and Services Center. In 2019, of course, the senior center relocated to the newly constructed Reach Center. In 2020, council authorized the lease of the building for the purpose of the JP for its business incubator. For a host of reasons, the business center has not been able to formally launch, and as a result, staff has recommended council consider moving on from that business center arrangement and looking to formally list the building in the immediate parking area for sale. Staff is working to line up a surveyor to prepare a new plat in order to split the portion of the property occupied by the building in the immediately adjacent parking from the municipal parking lot that exists. There is still a need for that parking lot for city operations, and so we would look to do a split of that parcel for that purpose. We have also identified, as we had a resident speak to this evening, a rather unique historic dynamic where a portion of the property, under a separate property deed, there's a recognition that was recorded for an easement. It's not actually on this deed, which is problematic, but I think the staff, we recognize that there's a unique access concern for the resident just to the north there. And so to me, it is appropriate that we would parcel off a portion off that small strip to provide access. And so as part of that survey, we'll look to amend that, and it really would frankly have no effect on the value of the rest of the property that that former senior center sits on. If approved, the resolution this evening would allow authorization for listing of the sale, for sale of the building in the immediate adjacent parking with a commercial realtor. Obviously, it costs us nothing to entertain those offers, and at such time as viable offers would be submitted, we'd come back to the property management committee and have discussion with the committee, and then all of council as to how you wish to move forward with any prospective sale. So again, this evening, Resolution 2022-E would authorize us to move forward with that listing for sale.
All right, thank you. Questions for the City Manager?
Can I call now?
No, it's, I'm sorry. So any of my colleagues have any direction for Mr. Mayor?
Just note that I'll be abstaining again for reasons stated earlier.
All right. So I'll ask one question. So maybe this is to Danette and Brian. So have, based on the concern we heard earlier, have we resolved the current lease arrangement that we have before we authorize approval of sale?
Well, I think the law directors weighed in on the lease and what can be done with the city's position or with the city's legal authority as well.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying, have we, do we believe that we've done our due diligence to terminate the lease at this point?
I think it depends on the outcome of this this evening. You know, so if council wants to provide for the sale, we have a letter prepared that would go to the proprietor of the, of the business center indicating what the next steps are. If you're electing not to sell it, then I think it's a different course of action, so. Or I should say sell it, or electing not to list it, correct me, sir.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I share the same concern that Councilman Ursula has. If the current tenant hasn't aggregated his due diligence part of the lease, then, you know, I still think the lifetime of the lease ought to be left to play out. So if he's aggregated any portion of his lease agreement, okay, fine. But if he's not, then I would have a problem supporting this.
Well, there are a couple of issues. First of all, this lease was not signed--
Could you speak up, please?
Yes. First of all, this lease was not signed approved test to form by the law director. It was not presented to me for that. Under the charter, if it does not have my approved test to form on it, it is not a valid binding contract.
Very good, that's all I got here.
So setting that aside, second issue, there were certain events of default that were outlined in the lease. One of the events of default was failure to obtain a certificate of occupancy within 180 days of the lease signing. That would have been November 1st, 2020. Certificate of occupancy wasn't obtained until March 22nd of 2021. So there were some, and that's one example, there were some events of default. Even setting those aside, even if we were going to argue there was a valid lease here, the lease itself states the sole purpose that that property can be used for is a business incubator. It cannot be used for any other purpose. My understanding is a change in use has been proposed, and that's not permitted under the lease terms. Second, it's my understanding that one of the proposed uses is to sublease the property that is specifically prohibited under the terms of the current lease. So what has been proposed for the use of this property couldn't even occur under the terms of the lease as it was written. I think council made this decision, what it originally did that lease, to lease this space for a dollar because it was to be a business incubator, something to support small business owners in this community. It wasn't a lease for a dollar to move a private business in to sublease the property. Those uses are not permitted. Even if council decided this is a valid lease, we want to proceed with it, all you can do with it is a business incubator. You can't sublease it. The terms of the lease itself state that. So with the proposed change in use, my understanding is there's no intent to use it for business incubator. My understanding is that one of the proposed uses is to sublease it, which you can't do. So I'm not sure I understand the argument that there's a valid lease when it's not being used for what the lease purpose was.
Mr. President, I think the law directors made a very compelling argument, and I would follow, I'd be supporting it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
So it sounds like we've gotten Brian Ryan's easement issue taken into consideration with subparcelling or sub-agreeing that--
I had to consult with the law director specifically about this. My position would be that what is reported on his property's deed is not necessarily lawful. I mean, you can't put a condition on another parcel on some other deed. But the issue is a practical issue, and divesting of that small sliver of property brings no meaningful loss in value. And I think it's an appropriate thing to do. It makes his property practical and livable and, you know, inappropriate. So we're taking into consideration as we look at the resurvey. We have to do that anyway to, you know, to parcel off the parking lot. It makes sense to make that accommodation.
And once, Mr. President, and once the lot is split, then it can be re-described. So it can be re-descripted.
You know, and if he chooses to accept that, and I have reason to believe he will based on staff's conversation with him, if he wishes to consolidate those lots, he can do that, or he could just keep them separate, whatever. But, you know, it makes sense. It looks like this provision was added to the deed on his property, I'm guessing in the '50s or so. Very unusual, the way it was done. And again, I think it's problematic, but there's a practical issue here, the issue here. And I think when you find these, what I would call sins of the fathers, I think you fix that when you see it. And in this case, it benefits him, but that's good for the neighborhood. It makes sense for that property to have that road or that driveway access back to his driveway or to his garage.
I think we see this all the time in BZA, Brian. So sins of our father.
Well, you see these unusual circumstances, and again, we talked about this alley vacation earlier. We have a lot of these, we're an old city, with properties that, you know, in bygone decades, they just didn't do things the way we would do them today. So again, I think when you find these things, you try to correct it and just apply some common sense, so.
All right, thank you very much. If there's any other questions?
So, yeah, Mr. President. So I guess I'm not arguing either the validity of the lease or the conditions of--
Terms and conditions.
I'm not arguing that. But I just, I feel if we don't, and although we believe it's feasible to move forward with the lease with any proposed conditions, if we as a city believe that we ought to be terminating that lease, right, for cause, I just feel like that ought to be a proceeding step to us, authorizing us to go do other actions with the property. So I'm not arguing that we shouldn't proceed with that. I just, I feel uncomfortable approving us to move on when we haven't done that step first. So should I not feel comfortable--
There isn't any language in the current lease that would prohibit us from listing it. I mean, I can rent a house, unless I've got something specific that the owner isn't allowed to list it for sale while I'm renting it, the owner can list that house for sale.
This is one of the property rights, property law. Sometimes you vote for, sometimes you--
So how soon would we proceed with that?
I can tell you, the assistant city manager already has the letter prepared. I've reviewed it. I think it's the city manager said they were going to send it out tomorrow, depending what council decided this evening.
Right, right. And I would assume we would have to engage with a surveyor and complete the survey before we could start the listing of the property, because we'd have to have a property specifics of the portion that--
Yeah, I mean, we could initiate the conversation with, again, in this case, we use commercial, a commercial realtor.
Right.
And I think we've already, you know, done some initial outreach to talk about what would be the appropriate steps. So my guess would be within the next few weeks that we would list it. Actually, the timeline to get the survey done is a little less time than we thought it was going to be.
Okay, okay, so that's a little more--
Couple weeks, yeah.
Okay. Well, as long as, as long as we've done the notification and we've done our due diligence on our side for the termination of the lease before we start the listing, I can see us proceeding with this. And I guess the only other thing I'd say is, you know, I wasn't here when we did, when the council did the, there was a decision that the council made to say--
What decision?
Well, no, that's okay, because there was a decision saying we had an asset, right? And it would be valuable for us to have a business incubator in the city. And we made a determination to use an asset that the city had to move that direction, right? And I think it still would be an asset to the city to have a business incubator, but the counterpart of that is we don't want to be a landlord long-term in the city either. And I don't know that there was any thought back when this all started in 2019 that we'd still be a landlord in 2025 timeframe either, right? So when the property goes up for sale, and there may be a lot of things we haven't anticipated in terms of cost, right, to use the property, and there may not be many bidders. We'll find out, right? I mean, it's one thing to have the auditor tell us what the value of the property is, it's another one to have the marketplace tell us what the value of the property is as well, too. So we either may find we have a substantial bid on it, or we may come back and we may find out we have no bids on it, right? In which case, we'll have to decide what to do at that point, so.
There would be nothing preventing him from buying it either.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so we did, we did have an executive on this. I can't go over the details of that. However, it was pretty much a consensus that we should move on as a council. So if anyone would care to make a motion to authorize the sale listing of 130 East Church Street?
Oh.
Okay, moved by Rebecca Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. And we've had enough discussion, so at this time, I'll go ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Stane.
President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. Our next item is a procedural motion. This is approving the sale of alcohol at the downtown Xenia Oktoberfest event on Saturday, October 9th. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Pursuant to section 1062 of our qualified ordinances, the city will consider allowing sale and consumption of alcohol on city property at public events, but only with the direct consent of city council. As such, the Xenia Oktoberfest Planning Committee has made a formal request seeking authorization to sell alcohol at the 2022 Oktoberfest event, which is scheduled for October 9th from noon to 10:00 p.m. City staff is working directly with the planning committee as we are poised to co-sponsor the special program in our downtown. The event will host multiple bands through the day, food vendors, and with council's approval, there would be sales of craft beer, which would be coordinated by our local Devlin Brewing, and they'd be serving some other craft beer products from the region. Staff has reviewed the event's operational plan. My office is planning to issue the special event permit. The alcohol sales component would require direct approval by city council. Staff is recommending council approve the motion to authorize the alcohol sales, conditioned upon the sales being permitted by a permit through the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, that it would be limited only to the pre-authorized area for sale and consumption and subject to any other control measures as required by my office or the police division. So with that, we present to council this motion recommending approval for authorization.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the sale?
Same.
Moved by Councilman Branham. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any other discussion?
I just want to make a quick, quick comment here. I think that we're heading in the right direction. I think that this is a good way that we're showing that we're working with the local business here with Devlin. I think with the passing of the motion tonight with the scooters, I think it would be due diligence of us as council members to potentially think about the long-term, that DORA aspect of saying, hey, do we bring that back to the voters? Because I think, you know, nobody up here on council wanted to make the decision on bringing it, but I think it would be behoove of us to put that in front of the voters down the line.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President? I would just add, and I just kind of missed that, we had no prior incidents, behaviorally speaking, or inappropriate sales or anything with our prior events with this particular activity, so just want to put that out there, kind of feel to mention that, but no issues before that raise any concerns, so.
All right, thank you. Move for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
No.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So at this time of the meeting, I apologize. I am actually going to excuse myself due to a contractual agreement I have with one of my customers. I have to report to work here in about 15 minutes. So I thank you all. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Vice President Ursula. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item is a procedural motion approving the scheduled bills in the amount of $211,489.89. Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have nothing to note on the bills this evening.
Do we have a motion?
Same.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
There's comments from council members?
Mr. Vice President, just one comment. On the first page, the Belbrook Fence Company, is that for the cemetery on East Third?
Yes. If you have seen, it looks very nice.
Would that eventually include signage?
I believe so, yes. We're looking at historic signage. I would probably probably say the markers, right?
Historical markings, state historical markings.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I just also, because I know it's a point of interest for you, Councilman, we've begun some conversation with public service, probably include our planning department as well, about pursuing some assistance to figure out, how do we, how do we better take, best take care of that site long-term? We have some trees that are probably 200 years old that are approaching into those graves. The condition of the grave stump continues to deteriorate. We don't really have the expertise in what's proper and best there, so that's something sort of on my radar, and I know that we'll get to it this year, but we, that's a historic asset that should be a point of pride for our community. We're making these incremental investments, and I think we need to take one more step to look at how we preserve that the best we can. So just for your knowledge.
I'm sure the pros and materials would be happy.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So this is, this is where we're doing the current city interments of folks that have been left with us, is that correct?
Right.
As well?
Yeah, as an accessory to the historic, right, cemetery, we have an additional new section in the back end. So just for general knowledge, that original historic part was the original cemetery for the city Xenia dating back to the 18... Some of the city founders are literally buried.
Right, right. Early 1800s, correct. And there is a lot of, has historical significance, but we are, I'm trying to think about how many folks we've...
Interred.
We've interred there from a city perspective now in the last couple of years.
Couple dozen.
Couple dozen as well, too. So when bodies are not claimed within the city or at the city hospital, those by law are turned over to the city, and it's our responsibility to do the burial. And so this is an active cemetery as well at this point.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Let's have a vote.
I'll for a vote.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Catherine Scherz?
Aye.
Catherine Mundy?
Aye.
Catherine Breen?
Aye.
Mary Mayes?
Aye.
Mr. Kerry?
Aye.
All right. Pointed official reports. Madam Law Director.
I'll start with the question that you asked at the last council meeting, Councilman Herschel, about the motorized bicycles.
Correct.
If you are over the age of 14, if you have a valid driver's license, you do not need anything additional for a moped or a motorized bicycle. If you do not have a valid driver's license, you can get a moped license. It's the same process, vision test, knowledge test, road test. Last I checked, the last price I could find, it was $19.50 to get one of those. For a motorcycle or a scooter, you have to have an endorsement on your actual driver's license. But for mopeds and motorized bikes, if you have a driver's license, you're good. If you don't, you can get a moped license.
License, okay. Great. Thank you, Madam Law Director.
And the only other thing I have is just to let you know, I would like to request from council a brief executive session this evening to discuss personnel matters.
All right. Thank you. And Madam Law Director made a request to the council president myself, and so we will make a motion at the, at the adjournment of the general session if we could adjourn into executive session for a brief discussion on a personnel matter.
And I would not anticipate any action afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Finance Director?
I have nothing to say this evening.
City Manager?
Yeah, just two points this evening. You know, Xenia is a great place to live. Xenia is a safe community, but we are not immune from evils of the world. And so it's been a rough day here locally. We've had a number of things that have kept our public safety services busy, and I've kept council abreast of details of that. So I just want to acknowledge a busy, rough day for our public safety folks, and just ask you to keep them in your prayers. Second, Monday, this, the coming Mondays, of course, Memorial Day, our offices will be closed to the general public and observance of the holiday. We will, of course, reopen for normal hours on Tuesday. So if you have business with the city, please make sure you're taking care of that tomorrow, or you'll have to wait till the following Tuesday. And that is all I have this evening.
Great. Council on questions for our appointed officials? Okay. Great. Let's go on to the boards, the boards, and commissions and committees. Councilman Branum, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah. BZA met on Monday. We had two variants, or one variant, well, two variants requests. One was to allow a six-foot-tall fence between the existing home and Kearney Lane, exceeding the maximum permitted fence height of four foot. And that was filed by Mr. and Mrs. Gaston and for the property located at 2758 Barnhill Place. That variance request was denied. There was another variance request to allow a deck attached to a home to be three foot from the property line instead of the required 20 foot, and three foot from the east side property line instead of the required five foot, and to allow a 12 by 24 above-ground swimming pool to be three foot from the rear and east property lines instead of the required 10 foot, filed by Sean and Christina Riley for the property located at 304 East Second Street. That variance request was actually also denied. The first case, it does seem like the BZA committee came up with a potential code change. So either council or planning and zoning commission will potentially hear that sooner or later, once staff has time to prepare that. The second case, Brian was sitting down with the applicant, and probably already has, because applicant really wanted to get that underway and figure out how he can accommodate the rules to be able to get that built on his property. So it sounded like he was pretty open to hopefully change it around so that him and his children and wife can enjoy a pool in their backyard because they had some other instances and issues that allowed them, caused them not to be able to, be able to go to like a public pool or Keys Island or that sort of thing. So.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Branum? The other one that's not listed was the Economic Development Advisory Board, which had its final meeting this last week. And the reason for that is some discussions coming out of, with the staff, and that we had some discussion earlier with the councils, that we prefer to have an annual meeting to look at the strategic direction of economic development in the city and also community development, and take a larger chunk of time, probably, you know, in the order of four to six hours, you know, as a, as a day with, with folks once a year. We're anticipating doing that in the fall timeframe so that we can influence other decisions like budgetary and the five-year construction plans that we have planned for the, for the city, and then also our council offsite that we typically do in the January timeframe as well, too. So the current, current board met this Tuesday, and we discussed that with them. So they were, they were amenable to that. And I just want to tell everyone who's been serving on that, thank you so much for their, their service. The other reason we're, we're looking at going this direction is we'd like to expand the number of folks who are able to participate in that discussion. Right now, we're bound, as it's a board under our current constitutional ordinance, we're limited to five members who are residents of the city. And we'd like to have a broader group of folks participating in that discussion, and also have some folks who, who have interests in Xenia that may not necessarily be residents of the city. So especially from a, from a industrial perspective, the majority of the folks who have industrial ownership here in the city do not reside in the city, but we would like to have their input in council in terms of economic direction that we have, as well as having participation from folks who have a lot of interaction with us here, such as at the county level, township level, things like that, that directly impact us in many ways, too. So the only, the direction or the request we got from the folks on the current board was please pick that date soon, so we get it on our calendars. And that when we have that, if we can provide material to them in advance of that discussion so that they can be prepared for that. But they were excited about having, having the time to do that. My anticipation, though, is that we, we, we may, under rules of council, be setting up potentially in the future an economic development subcommittee so we can have discussions with staff on a more regular basis, not have to bring it to the entire council, at least vet those items before we bring it to the whole council. And there may be some other ad hoc committees will stand up to look at specific economic issues. And, you know, just thinking here, one of those might be the downtown businesses as we go into the, we had a lot of good feedback as we're doing the, the planning for the Xenia Town Square. As we move forward that, we probably have some ongoing input from folks for the new town square as well as the existing downtown business area, and make sure that we're moving forward in an exonerative fashion for that. So we'll overcome for that, but that was our last meeting this, this last week. Also, I've talked to Madam Law Director about that, and we'll be here in the future through the legislative...
We did it tonight.
What's that?
We already did it tonight, that was revealed.
Right, right. So removing that section from our...
Yes, it will be on council's agenda on June 23rd.
Great. Thank you. Any, any questions about that from council? Okay, great. All right. Council comments. Ms. Dean?
Can I make a motion to excuse Councilman Dean? Apparently, he's had some unexpected health issues tonight. That would be late.
I, so...
I'll check with the president.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
You already made the motion.
Okay, I'll second. Sure, you make a motion. Do we have a second? Comments? The only comment I would make is that we had some discussion earlier that it's, it behooves us to have those kind of conversations with our council president. And there are obviously were dates and times when communications were hard, but I think we all have the ability to either use our phones, to give a phone message or a text message to the council president, or to ask someone else if we're, if we can't physically do that, to make a discussion with the council president. And once again, the reasons for that is, as folks are, as he, it's his, his responsibility to plan for the evening, and we owe it to him to let him know who's going to be present so that he knows whether things can be bought to motion or to vote. And it's just out of respect to our council president. That's the only comment I would make on that. So any, any other comments?
It's motion on the floor.
Okay, we have a motion, so let's go ahead and take a vote.
Catherine Scherz?
Aye.
Catherine Mundy?
Aye.
Catherine Breen?
Aye.
Mary Mayes?
Aye.
Vice President Herschel?
Nay.
Mr. Kerry?
Mr. Kerry's.
I would just point out that my reasoning is it would have been very easy to text at 5:55 to say, I can't come tonight.
Okay. I'm sorry. Any other comments?
No, that's it.
Okay. Councilman Branum?
Nothing further than...
Councilman Scherz?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just a few items. Number one, we want to congratulate every graduate of every institution of higher learning in this area, as college, high school, middle school, grade school, kindergarten. Congratulations. You're moving on with the, with the black box. Condolences, Mr. Vice President, to the family of Miss Ruth Rivers-Hazel. Mrs. Hazel actually lives in Wilberforce, but all of her children attended senior city schools. One of them is inducted in the Xenia Athletic Hall of Fame. I was a classmate with her oldest daughter, Cheryl, and I think she's in Seattle, and I haven't seen her in 50 years. But definitely want to extend condolences to the Hazel family. I met Miss Hazel a few years ago. She became a volunteer for the Greene County Democratic Party, and I think she was a precinct captain also. And finally, Mr. President, just like to thank all the city workers I've seen, and the community service director, seeing his leadership in action. We're getting some of these plots on the corners with plants that we could be proud of, and the plantings are looking good. The mulches exceedingly well. They got the, the good glaxable mulch, the best mulch in town. And we're beautifying this place step by step, lot by lot. And that's how it goes. So I'm trying to do my part on my street. And we'd like to encourage the residents, especially the organizations, the churches, to get one of these pole banners. So we don't want our American flags by themselves. We want to advertise who you are, too. I see one from the YMCA out here in front of One Bistro. Every organization, please, buy a pole banner. We have a number of poles that have two sides to them. So there's plenty of space for you. And I think you can purchase them through the city planner's office, through his, his office secretaries. And they run about $150, but they're durable. They'll last about three years. So for $50 a year, it's a pretty good investment. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. A couple things to report. On the last few weeks since our last council meeting on the 13th, I participated in the prayer breakfast at Soane. On Saturday, the 14th, was Central State's graduation, and I had an opportunity to speak on behalf of the city and just bring greetings and a welcome and congratulate the students. I wanted to mention on May 17th, Bob Collinor, he's a teacher here at Legacy Christian. He's been in Christian education for over 40 years. He was my principal at one point. He was also my teacher, and sang in many choirs under Bob Collinor. And he retired, and I wanted to congratulate him personally and thank him for all his efforts. On the 20th, we had an opportunity to go to the production of Beauty and the Beast with Actors Unlimited and congratulate the high school students that did that play. They did such a fantastic job. We had a wonderful time as a family. On the 21st was a luncheon for Pastor Freeman and his retirement luncheon. Again, just a really neat afternoon to thank Pastor Freeman for the work that he's done, not just at his church, but in this community. And I know the ways he's impacted my life, but also many, many people here in the Xenia community. That same day in the evening, we went to the Air Force Band of Flight concert at the Air Force Museum celebrating the 75 years of the Air Force. And what a great night. It was their first full live concert in two years, and they were on fire that night. Just the energy and excitement to be back in person and have that show. And it was a great night, a lot of fun to celebrate. Was able to participate in the swearing-in of Luke Nykirk and congratulate him. His family's been a friend of ours for a long time. Swore in as a new firefighter. Very excited. Of course, the Xenia graduation was on the 25th, and congratulations to the Xenia grads. On a personal note, today was the preschool graduation, and my daughter was participating in, so that was a lot of fun. And the city manager's daughter as well.
I didn't have to go, though.
Took pictures. So, and I just, with that said, I wanted to thank our Xenia Police Department. Yesterday, the last day of morning for the preschool, I was speaking to one of our officers who was at the school, and she was just explaining how all of our officers were at all the schools yesterday and today, just to be a presence. And it was just so, it was just a very proud moment. A lot of parents thanking them and just feeling that weight that their kids were not celebrating their last day of school. But it was a Xenia proud moment. Officer Mumpower was at the preschool, and she just did a phenomenal job of loving on parents and kids and being excited for them. So I just, I was very proud of our police department and want to thank them because I know the last couple of days have been hellacious, and I'm thankful for their presence, their sound mind, and they're just who they are as people. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. A couple comments before we adjourn into executive session. I had an opportunity to go to the kickoff banquet for the hamvention last week, and it's extraordinary, the number of folks who come to that event, and where they come from. So at my table, there was a lawyer from Washington, DC. There was a gentleman who was a manager of a power station down in Florida. There was a, a radio personality from Kansas City. There was a, there was an individual come from Virginia Beach. There was someone there from North Dakota. And this was just at one table. And so it's, it's the folks that are, that are into ham radio, this, for, for those few days, this is the mecca to come to and, and to be with their fellow ham radio folks. So I think there's, there's opportunity for us. And once again, I know this is a, this is a county event and a county fairground and a township, but it's, it's all very close to us. And I'm hoping next year that we can think about some ways to actively partner with those folks because it is a definite amazing draw from all over the nation. And they're all coming to Xenia High.
There you go.
For all those things, right? So that's, that's a great thing. I also had a chance to attend the retirement of Dr. Reverend John Freeman. And I was amazed at the number of folks that turned out to honor John and understand the scope of his life as a pastor of the, of the AME Church here in town, and now the pastor of the You Are the Church here in town as well, too. So John, John is one of those pillars of light in our community and someone who all deserve the honor. And if you don't know John, his church is on Columbus Street, and it's open on Sundays. That'd be a great place to go.
Columbus and Hill.
Columbus and Hill. And he, he, he preaches a mean service and he plays a mean keyboard, both. So it's, you'll be entertained and inspired on, on both those regards. Had an opportunity to stand in for Senator Hackett and, and our...